All right, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and get started and let David join us when he, when he's able to get in. All right, so Russell, if you'll, if you'll call the role, please.
Certainly, Mayor. Okay, Mayor Breckus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Kaczynski.
Okay, well, Mayor, I just, I just spoke to Councilmember Kaczynski. He is trying to connect right now, so hopefully he'll be with us momentarily, but if you want to go ahead and get started, that's your prerogative.
We just have a lot of folks here, so I want to, I want to be, respect their time. So do we, should we call the role for the comp board as well, or not?
Yes, you need to.
Yes.
Emily, can you call the role for your board, please?
Absolutely. Jason Holberg?
Here.
George Morris?
Present.
Robert Serrada?
Here.
Lori Parrish?
Here.
Anna Coldus?
Here.
And Joe Altsho? He said he was going to be late.
He just came in.
He just came on.
All right, very good.
And Councilmember Kaczynski is with us now as well.
All right, great. All right, so let's, let's do the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, for the record, I didn't say Noel Hollingsworth, so he is, he's there.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Correction accepted, present.
Thank you, Noel. All right, so I'm just going to do a short introduction. And, and then I'm, I want to hear from, from the board, I want to hear from the council. I guess first I want to hear from the council, make sure we're all on the same page. But certainly, we want to input from the board and, and I will open it up for input from the residents as well, so. And I mean, make a comment on that. I know in the past, we have not always opened up workshops to residents. I, I believe that that's a critical part of it, so we can expect that in, in workshops going forward. All right, so what the, the primary item that we were, have before us in this workshop is the discussion over having a barn or space for animals in, on every property. I, I'm just going to give a real brief overview of kind of my perspective on it. I think there's a lot of different ways. We've, we've talked about a lot of different ways to accomplish this. I personally am not tied into one way or another. I want it to be something that's fair. I want it to be something that's right. I want it to be something that does not step on the property rights of the residents of our town. But I also am strongly believe that every property, we're the ranches, and every property in our town should, not that every property has to have animals, but every property should be able to have animals. And if we see new development coming before us with some sort of a plan that will not allow for animals to be on the property, I think that that's a red flag. I would not be in favor of that. I think it's important for us to put the elements in place before any developer shows up, that they know that that's, that's the rules here in the ranches, and that's the way it is. So that's, that's my personal perspective. But with that said, I think it's important that before we hand this over to the comp board, that they have a good feeling or what the, the feeling of the, of the council is, so that they can do their job and, and come back with something that's in harmony with what the council will approve, so that they're not, you know, wasting their time and effort on it. So, so with that, I'm going to open it up, and like I said, first, I'd like to hear from other members of the council, any, you know, agree, disagree, your thoughts on the right way to handle this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I, if you please, I'd like to take a couple minutes and, and say a few things. I'd like everybody to understand that I asked for this workshop. When this first came up, I had some concerns and some questions that really bothered me. I think that it was a, it started out as a requirement that every place has to designate a spot. And I was concerned with that because again, and you mentioned it, it infringed on the rights of people to build. I, I understand the problem with the developers coming in, but for individual homeowners such as myself, I come out and build my own home. And I was able to set my house back off of the street, a hundred foot, a little over a hundred foot. I didn't want it out on the front. If I'd have been told to, I had to set a space away for a barn in the back, and I didn't want a barn, we had animals. There's been one now, but if I had to put one in the back, then I'd have had to move my house up to the front. Or, let's say, and I'll use numbers just to make it easy, an acre is forty thousand square foot. On that one acre, you're allowed to build twenty percent of the property that's eight thousand square foot. So I come out and build an eight thousand square foot home, a dream house. And you're in, the way it was proposed was you had to take away from that house to have room for the overhand of a barn. So that was the concern. These are the concerns that, that bothered me. You are right, we do need to keep this town as rural as possible. I spoke to a number of residents, as most of you know during my campaign. And rural lifestyle meant death to everybody. Some people come out here just for the peace and quiet. Some people come out here and build a big home, and they take their kid to riding lessons, because they don't want horses, they can't afford horses. There's people out here that came out and they planted trees in their yard as a nursery, not a nursery, I'm sorry, but to grow their own fruit and vegetables. Or they planted palm trees to sell, and, and they didn't want a barn. So there's many different ideas of what rural is. So I, I would think that we'd have to be very careful infringing on people's rights to build. Somehow, we commend our two commissioners for speaking up when Circle S was done. They had the developers agree to put in certain stipulations. It wasn't required, but they felt compelled to do it to stay friendly with us. That might be a way to go about doing it, but as far as putting on a requirement that it has to be there, and it has to be a barn, is, I, I think is a little bad. Some people may want chickens, some people may want goats. They don't want a barn, they don't want horses, and, 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 you know, I just feel that you got to be very careful with this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, Gary.
Hey, thanks, thanks, uh, thank you, thank you, Jim, for suggesting the workshop. I'm okay with the, having, designating some area for farm animals. And it's a, a question of size, I think, of what we're talking about, and location, and the parameters on how would we enforce this. And I'll give you a couple of friends where, where my thinking is going. It initially started out, I think, at around three to four hundred square feet, which is like one percent of an acre. Somehow that morphed into like twenty-four hundred square feet. And that was a bit alarming and very distressing, because now where, where are you going to put it? It's not in drainage, it's not, doesn't coincide with if you wanted to put in a swimming pool, if you wanted to put in a greenhouse, if you wanted to put in a chicken coop, or you know, something to that effect. The other thing that was thought that crossed my mind is what do you do when you're in the middle of a re, a teardown or a rebuild? Does that new law or new requirement count? And let's say the teardown or the rebuild is not to your liking. We do get hurricanes, we do get an occasional tornado, it's been, fortunately, we haven't had that many. And homes do catch fire. So now if you're rebuilding a home that had caught fire, and the last one was, thank God, decades ago. But now, are you suddenly required to have X, Y, Z square footage for farm animals, or, you know, something to that? Whatever, whatever comes out of this, you know, those are the kind of questions that are perplexing me, because this one size fits all thing, I don't think it's going to work, to be honest with you. I don't think, I don't, I don't see it working for, for our town and for our council, to be honest with you. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of what ifs that we've got to answer, and I just threw out three or four. That, it just came immediately to mind. I'm, I'm fine with designating some, some area for farm animals. And, but, you know, to, to go from one percent, which is like four hundred square feet, and I'm using round figures, obviously, to suddenly going to like six percent, and then cutting into the ten, twenty percent that you're allowed to build a home on, to me, I, we're going in the wrong direction if we're doing that. I think, those are my thoughts. And I listened to what else he accounts with, other members do.
Great, thank you. Bob, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I, I feel the same way as Jim in terms of property rights. I mean, I would be very upset if, if I was told how I have to use my property after spending a small fortune to acquire it. And, you know, I, I like the idea of perhaps some options for people. Maybe one opportunity is, I, I know how we have our, our twenty percent rule. Would it be possible for, you know, somebody to, for, if somebody wants to build to the full twenty percent, would it be possible, or is it a good idea then to allow an extra three percent for animals? For paddock, pasture, you know, barn, really barn and paddock are probably the key things. Because then, in that scenario, they're really not adding to impervious and things like that. Yeah, if they put up a barn, but barns don't have floors generally either, so. If, if we can work with that other eighty percent, or come up with some other options, but, you know, honestly, if, if I were really intending on building on twenty percent of my property, and, and the town came by and said, listen, you can't, you've got to carve out two percent, three percent, whatever that is, for somebody in the future who you may never even know. I, I would probably take you to court on that, because it doesn't make sense to me as the current property owner. Now, from, from a council standpoint, I'm, I love the ideas of, of, you know, animals on everybody's property. I think we all have had or have animals. So, just one thought, I'm not sure if it's a good one, but it's one thought.
Great, thank you, Bob. David, yeah?
Yeah, oh, thank you, um, I'm a, I think one of the important issues, being a council member, is we still have to fight for preserving the rural lifestyle. And that means sometimes we have to go out of our way to protect the equestrian community. The horses, as we've known, are some of the most expensive animals to maintain. And once it becomes more and more restrictive on having horses, we start gravitating toward what happened in plantation, where there used to be lots and lots of horses. And as the zoning became more and more restrictive, instead of horses, they have cars with names of horses that really, I don't want Southwest Ranches to turn into something like that. And I do see a problem with impinging on the tens or ten or twenty percent build out. If there's something that can be done in that, accommodating that, I would support something like that very strongly. And, and I really want to focus more on the new, new developments, and there, I think there may be five or six big parcels of property that I think that this should be impacting. When I learned that there were two lots at Circle S, that it would be impossible to put a barn on because of the power lines, I felt that the developer could have drawn those lots differently, and maybe not had as many lots. And because I, I still think that there should be something where a landowner would be able to put a, a barn on if they so wanted for their horse. And that those two lots in Circle S, where they cannot put a barn on ever, I think does not reflect protecting the rural lifestyle and the equestrian lifestyle of the town. That kind of wraps up my thoughts on where I, what I feel about this.
Great, thank you, David, appreciate it. Okay. Appreciate all the input. Let me open it up to the, the comp plan board and see if there's, their comments there. Yeah, Lori, I see your hand up.
Yeah, first of all, you know, I'm, I have chicken coops, I don't have horses, but I love to see them go by. But I was thinking about it, and what my concern is, like, ours worked out. Tracy Moore's, who still lives out here, built our house. And we're real lucky, because I'm like Jim, I want to, don't want to be close to the road. Well, there's a way to do that, too, because in Sunshine Ranches, we've either got, you know, the long-going-across lots, or the ones going back, you know, how they're skinny and deep, or wide and not so deep. Anyway, those are the two different kinds of lots here. I'm one of the wide-across ones with not a lot of depth. But I think where I see the most concerns is the houses like that Toll Brothers built, and they built a high-quality product. But they built them, I can't remember, it's a hundred and seventy-second, was it, or a hundred and sixty-eighth? I can't, but anyway, one of them was Magnolia Estates. Well, I believe the code says you can only build on ten percent of the property. Well, for the ranches out here, you know, two acres is eighty-seven thousand square feet. In the other areas where it's one acre, it's forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. And twenty percent of that is eighty-seven hundred and twelve square feet. So that leaves a great deal of room, even on a one-acre lot, to build a property. And I think the issue is not so much saving some back, but I wonder, I don't believe that Magnolia Estates and that other development on the east side of, I can't remember if it's a hundred and seventy-second, I forgot what the other one was called. There's no way that they've only built on twenty percent of that property. Because I remember going out, out there one day with Sally, David and I, and I wondered how they'd even put a shed in their yards. But what I think it is, I think too, though, so I think there's enough room. What my concern is, I don't know enough about horses to know what's the appropriate size, but I would think there's a minimum for an acre and a minimum for two acres, you know, some kind of minimum. But I think one of the things we can do is the, watch the site plans. How someone situates a house on a piece of property makes all the difference in the world if you have something left. For example, like, if you wanted to make sure you had to have the fifty-foot setback, one of the things you could do is like, at my house, push it a little further to the west, and you could use the east side. Or, you know, I think how you locate the home, and George is probably better at this than I am, but how you locate the home on a lot makes a big difference as to what kind of room you have left over. Anyway, but I lived in Davie on a builder's acre. Some of you were at my house, some of you haven't been. I lived in Sequoia Estates, and we were allowed to have two horses on our lots. So, and the other thing that I, you know, I know that the eight-by-eight manure pile turns a lot of people off, I guess, if they live next door, close to it. But in Davie, we had waste management, and people who had barns had trashcans and put manure in them, and Davie drove it away. I mean, they didn't have manure piles. They had, you know, bought a couple of extra garbage cans. So I don't know if that's an issue either. But I agree with everybody that if you don't do something now, because the last few big pieces of property are coming in with developments. So if you don't do something now, I don't think, you know, that we'll have a chance to keep the area what, what you used to living in. Because now I see many of the long-timers, I call them, one just down the street from me, at your last council meeting, had a petition to divide that piece of property in two. And I looked at where the line, I think she was proposing, her barn and a shed are in both of them. So I hope that a council member saw it, and this, you know, the barn and shed are going to have to come down, because they're not fifty feet away from anything. But I, I see that as land gets more value, valuable prices go up, I think you're going to see lots and lots more of people that have, you know, over four acres trying to subdivide them. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. Yeah, George?
Hey, everybody. Um, we've talked about this before in the comp board, and I've never really gotten a real answer with regards to, we discussed in the past adding additional percentage. I'm definitely against taking away people's property rights. I agree with, with Jim, you know, and Gary, and it seems like Bob, with regards to taking away, you know, a portion of the twenty percent. My suggestion has been in the past to add two percent for plot coverage, because what we're really talking about here is plot coverage. And the plot coverage is, for the most part, the roof. I think a paddock or anything else like that doesn't count in that percentage. It would just be roof. Jeff can elaborate on that. But I'm all for protecting the animals and having space for, for the animals, but I'm against taking away people's property rights. And I think the, the solution for that in the medium ground is basically to grant people who have built out their twenty percent, ten percent, depending upon the zoning, to allow them up to two percent for an additional barn. The, the paddock or the running area, whatever, that doesn't count, because there's no roof, there's no coverage, it's typically dirt, it's fenced in. I don't think that's a deal. But that really is, for me, in my opinion, the round solution to be able to, to solve everybody's problem by not taking profit rights and granting people in addition to have that extra barn space. And we also need to keep in mind that as much as we want to, you know, protect animals and make sure everybody has a place to put horses, it's a great idea, but not everybody wants a horse. The reality is not even a horse. And you can, you can still have one of these lots where there's maybe not enough room to put a barn. You can still have a horse, because you can go down the block and you can rent a space from your neighbor to put a horse. And we know people in the town that have done that, and, you know, people have owned horses, but they didn't have it in their backyard. They go, there's plenty of barns and stalls that you can, have a horse in the ranches, you just go down the block in your golf cart, or two blocks over, and the horses, you keep the horse there, and you could enjoy the ranches, the riding paths and everything else like that. So I don't see the necessity to actually carve out of people's one-acre lots or whatever and put a, a square there, and so you can build in this. Because again, you're going to take away people's rights, you're going to, you know, prevent them from putting a pool, maybe a mother-in-law quarter, or something of that nature. And, you know, we need to be flexible, and we do need to protect the animal rights, and I think granting an extra two percent for plot coverage, allowing a barn, would solve this entire issue and make everybody content. That, that's kind of my opinion there. It's a, it's a win, and that's kind of where I'm coming in at. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Noel.
I have submitted to the town council and also the plan advisory board my position as to the future areas. And if all of you would take a look at that at this point, I'll go through it and tell you my reasons for my conclusions. Does everyone have it? I'm going to assume that everyone does have it.
No, I don't.
Point of clarification, then I could not send it out before the meeting due to sunshine, but I'm going to send it out to everyone now. The council all has it.
No, you could have sent it out to us and not violated the sunshine law.
Okay.
That's right.
You can talk to Keith about that, but you certainly could have done that.
That's correct.
As you send it to everyone.
As long as they did not reply to it.
Okay, well, let's go ahead, go ahead, Noel.
Okay. Number A, minimum of additional one thousand four hundred square feet, fourteen hundred square feet, of contiguous plot coverage above the allotted plot coverage, and all single-family classifications shall be granted to the property owner for agricultural uses. Barns or shade greenhouses, paddocks, turnout areas, or container field plantings. I did not at the time have a position on whether or not it should be just brand-new undeveloped property, or whether it should be rebuilds or anything else. I've come to believe that it should only be on new undeveloped property. B, the agricultural area shall be designated on the survey of the property and submitted on the building plans as a agricultural reserve area. The agricultural reserve area shall have a minimum width of sixteen feet and be a minimum of fifty feet from any occupied building. I'm using sixteen feet, because that is the size of a stall of a barn and a four-foot overhang. Fifty feet, which is already in our code and our conferency plan, is fifty feet from any occupied building. And that was put in by the original council way back in the beginning, I believe in two thousand and two. D, any structure, farm animal housing, or plant material grow house, construction within this area shall conform to the building code of town and be for agricultural use only. The reason we can do this is that this is only for non-agricultural exempt properties. E, any agricultural structure built within the agricultural reserve area shall not have the roof overhang used in determining the square footage of the structure. F, any structure built as an agricultural structure must be maintained and used as an agricultural structure to continue the additional plot coverage. G, any structure within the agricultural reserve area must be maintained within the agricultural category of uses, or the structure must be removed and a new agricultural, or a new agricultural area must be designated on the property survey and approved by the town. H, any agricultural structure built before the implementation date of this ordinance or ordinances shall be grandfathered as long as all of the other town codes have been complied with. Those are my positions on the various items. And many of the things that you were talking about, this does address completely and totally. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Noel. Yeah, Lori.
If anybody decides to adopt that, it's grand-parented, because grandfathers wouldn't be here without grandmothers.
Robert, I saw your hand up.
Hey, guys, you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I was thinking about this. Twenty-four years ago, when we chose to move out here, my, my dream was to build an artist studio in my backyard. If I had found out that there was a law that said like, no, you can't build whatever you want in your backyard, you have to build a barn, I would have moved to Davie or some other place. So what other diverse people are we going to deny our community when we restrict their freedom to choose what they want to do with their own land? Um, an individual on the board said a couple months ago that the disappearance of large mammals is, is this, something like, it's a symbol of the disappearance of, of the rural lifestyle. That's actually a logical fallacy. Like, if it's raining, that means there is dark clouds overhead. Doesn't mean that when there's dark clouds overhead, it's raining. We're treating the symptom. We're not treating the cause. Regardless of what we do here, the equestrian lifestyle will continue its decline regardless. Look, when I moved out to Dean's Ranches, there used to be horse poop on the street all the time. I used to see people riding the horses, and, and it was cool, but I can't remember the last time I'd seen a horse out here. The demographic, the demographics have changed. Oh, I'm really worried that we're going to restrict people's freedoms. And we're going to start to turn into Weston, but in a different kind of way, instead of like catering to people that have Range Rovers and Ferraris, we're catering to people that have horses. Um, I'm going to quote Nietzsche here, and this is probably the first time Nietzsche's appeared at a town council meeting. Whoever fights monsters should see to it that in the process, he does not become a monster. Should see to it that in the process, he does not become a monster himself. So let's not become Western. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Robert. I do believe that is a first with Nietzsche.
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak again real quick.
Sure.
Noel, I uh, I appreciate the letter. And and I don't want to get into debate now with this workshop, but there are several areas there that I have some other questions about. So uh, maybe another workshop on that might be necessary. I think some of the requirements that you're asking for are a little overboard, but uh. Uh, you know, to to require somebody to put it on a survey for a planned site that and. There's different areas like that that I'm not comfortable with, so, you know, I don't, we can't talk, I don't know if you and I can talk about it.
Sure.
Can we? Okay, then maybe Noel and I can talk about it individually, so. But there are things here that are good and then there's things here that I'm I'm not real comfortable with.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Noel.
This here is what I'm saying is very simply. That many of the questions that have come about and people, when I spoke to them, first thing I was talking about was barns. And then some of the nursery owners that I know said, what about if I wanna build a shade house or something? Well. That's why I say call it an agricultural reserve area. And once it does need to be designated on the on the property. You can't just say you're going to have to have an agricultural reserve area. Because then the builder will just say, okay, it's there somewhere. And it's two foot long and it goes all the way around the property. You have to designate the size and place that it's going to be. And there's been the question if we have it ten feet from the house, possible. And if someone wants to do a pool and we have a designated area. Then you have to move the designated area, which is an additional cost of doing the survey over again. While it's fifty feet from the house, then you can put a pool in and have a barn or agricultural reserve area beyond that. As to what Robert was saying, we're not saying you can't build. A artist cottage or studio in your backyard. You can. It just takes part of your twenty percent build out. That's all it is. What we're giving with the agricultural reserve area is an additional. Cut plot coverage above the twenty percent if you had built out the entire twenty percent. Because if you build a barn or a shade house or something like that on an agricultural reserve area. Then you still have the twenty percent to build your house and any other structure you want. A garage or uh, art shed or whatever. There is no saying, we're saying additional. Because having the agricultural community within our area is. Part of our soul of our town. And if we protect the most expensive item of the agricultural area. Which is the raising and carrying and feeding of horses. Then the rest of us who raise chickens, and I do raise chickens and have for thirty-five years. Our goats, our cattle, or whatever. Those people will be able to have the ability to do that. And I say we do the smallest area, mandatory area that we can possibly do for the keeping of horses. Not a percentage of the property, but a fixed size. And that way, you can put it on a one acre or you can put it on a two acre. If you want more land used for that, you can do that. And I think the smallest piece of property. That is a two acre piece minus all of the easements and everything else. This council member, member Jablonski's property, when I was taking a look at it. Because his buildable area, he has the power lines, he has a street easements on two sides. So his buildable area is less than anyone else over in Rolling Oaks. So he's possibly the smallest piece that's buildable. And you could still put a barn on his property. Because the paddock area and everything could be underneath the power lines. The problem with we had.
No, no, okay, I I don't want, I want to give time for everybody to speak and I appreciate what you're saying. Okay. Um, is there anyone else on the on the board, on the comp board that has not yet spoken? We do have a couple of residents. Okay, yeah, Joseph, I see your name.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
You know, at the uh, you know, a- as we saw the last set of elections roll around. Uh, my recollection is just about every commissioner ran on a platform of keep it rural, keep South Southwest Ranches rural. And I think what what we're talking about is what does that mean? You know, I I hear a lot of comments today about personal freedom and if anybody tells me I can't do this and I can't do that on my own property. I wouldn't move here. Okay, so how do we keep it rural? And not be able to have some kind of reasonable restriction, some type of reasonable requirements on land? You know, I, you know, I heard the comment about let's not become Western. Okay, well, let's not become Western in the other direction. Where every house is sold out to the highest and best use. And and now we have McMansions on every property with no ability for agriculture. Because that's where the money is, you know, go into Weston Hills Country Club and that's what you have. So I'm in agreement, let's not become Western. But I come at it from a different side. I I don't want to impinge on people's freedoms and I think that. As to pay homage to Lori, grandparenting is an important concept. But if we are going to have any reasonable, realistic meaning to the idea of keep it rural. We are not going to be able to do that without having some kind of planning that includes the ability in the future. To have agriculture on our properties. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Jason.
Yeah, I I first of all, I wanted to thank the comp board for their hard work so far on this. I know we kind of like jumped into it and then we put the brakes on it. We uh, we worked on, uh, you know, some, as we call homework, a little survey and we had some, you know, fantastic, uh, it looks like some feedback on that, but. Look, I I think the important thing here is that as the comp board, we're looking for some, again, some direction from the council. I I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but listening to each of you speak, it seems like you're in favor of the idea. But there may be some, some, just some parameters that we need to work through. Um, I feel comfortable that our board could could work through uh, the nuances to make this. Uh, to make it work. I just need to make sure that, uh, you know, hopefully out of this meeting today, that we can get the direction and the thumbs up to say, hey. Uh, the the council, uh, uh, you know unanimously likes the idea. Wants us to go back to the draw, you know, to the drawing board. And then work through, you know, the size issues, uh, you know, uh, how it affect maximum allowable, you know, build size. New homes versus, uh, you know, uh, teardowns and vacant lots, you know. We had already kind of like put these in different buckets already, so all the things that you're bringing up are already things that we were working on. Um, so that's why I feel pretty confident. I don't think, you know, you guys have brought up anything, you know, really out of left field yet that. Again, that we're not already, uh, you know, it's not on our radar and that we're happy to continue to work through, so. Again, that would be to me the most helpful to make sure that we're going in the right direction. Um, I could tell you personally that I've spoken, you know, the people that I've spoken to outside the board. Uh, on this are extremely favorable with just the concept again, and that is. You know, that uh, there is a room set aside on every property. Of however that big is, however that works for animals to exist and especially, you know, horses. We're we're an equestrian community, as I was told. Um, and we're an agricultural community. Uh, so uh, again, um, we're happy to work through this. We just need to make sure that we have a, uh, you know. Uh, consensus from the all five of you guys, uh, on making sure that we're gonna move forward on this, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jason, and thank you for uh, chairing this board and all the work you put into it. All right, uh, anybody else from the board themselves that would like to say something that has not yet spoken? Okay, um, Lori, I saw you, see your hand up, uh, we'll let you speak and then I'm gonna open it up to the public.
Okay, I just want to say that. An acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. If you can build twenty percent, that says you can build eighty-seven hun- eighty-seven hundred and twelve square feet. I know many homes on an acre. Well, I know many homes on two acres that would exceed the sixteen, well seventeen thousand. But think about an acre, you've got forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. You take the twenty percent you could build, which is eighty-seven hundred and twelve square feet. If you took two percent, two percent of that acre, that would only be eight hundred and seventy-one square feet. And what I think you need to do though is like, you know, I grow lots of plants and flowers and we have chickens and lots of things. And, you know, God only knows what else Kaylee and Jeff can save. But I don't think you can call it ag. I I you can, I want to ask Keith or I think somebody needs, it doesn't have to be answered tonight. But I think you need, if you, if you use the word agriculture, people tend to think of that in terms. Of commercial agriculture to get the ag exemption. When a lot of us, I guess if I wanted. To sell something, I could be, but I think you need, if you use the term agriculture, I think it needs to clarify that it's commercial and non-commercial ag. Cause some of us just do it as a hobby. And the other thing, um, um, I don't, so I think that's, I don't think that two percent is a very big number. And Jim, like a lot of people, if, you know, like I turned a carport into a potting shed. I told, you know, remember I tried to buy Mr. Pirtle. If I'd had his barns, they would have been potting sheds. I mean, if um. Someone wants to do something and God only knows I couldn't be an artist. But I would build a she shed or an art studio that looked like a whole lot like a barn on the inside and do whatever. The inside, because if you have show activities, you could turn it into something else. So I think that somehow we need to define, it's not just commercial agriculture. And also, two percent, Jim, is a real little. Number, it's not very big and you could, they could put the ag in your front yard if somebody bought your house.
Right, okay. Lori, two percent of the eight thousand seven hundred square foot is sixteen, seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and four.
I thought it was two percent of the property, which is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty. You're doing two percent of the house. I thought, I didn't know it was two percent of the size of the house. I thought it was two percent of the property. Which is it? If it's two percent of the property, it's eighty, eight hundred and seventy-one point two square feet.
Yeah, I mean, it hasn't been defined yet.
Was it gonna be two percent of the twenty percent or two percent of the property size?
Yeah, that's what I would think it was.
It was, you'd think what, Steve? Which way is it?
Uh, uh, well, it's, it hasn't been decided, so it could be either way, but I was assuming as the discussion was going on that it was two percent of the property size.
Right, it wouldn't make sense to base it on the size of your house.
Yeah. All right.
Property size, as I was suggesting, yes.
Okay, all right, um, so appreciate all the feedback. Um, we do have a good number of residents that are here, a couple of hands that are up. So Russell, if you could assist us in um, working to, so we can hear their their thoughts as well.
Certainly, Mayor, um, we have one speaker that I see with their hands raised, Roger and Nadine McIntosh. Roger and Nadine McIntosh, can you hear us?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, here we go. We can hear you.
Yeah, we thought that this was settled years ago when you talked about designating a certain amount of property. Um, for this purpose of equestrian activities. And we're certainly for it and I agree that we are not Western. They have their own. If you want no agriculture, no horses, you want tennis courts in your backyard, you go to a different property. I mean, we are definitely here for the um, animal activity. I won't just limit it to horses. And since we're really at this point talking about whatever parcels are left. I think it's really important to make sure that we do secure some, some property for that benefit. And we have lots of horse poop on our street. Month or week.
Great, great, thank you. Appreciate the comments.
Uh, Mayor, the uh, we have one of the speaker, Christine Brownlow. Ms. Brownlow?
Hi, everyone. How are you this evening?
Hey, Chris, good.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, Chris, we can't, we can't hear you. It's, it's not coming across.
All right, Mayor, we'll uh, try to get back to her when she resolves her internet issues.
Okay, okay.
I, well, that's Noel Hollingsworth that has his hand up. That's from earlier, I believe.
Oh, okay, got you.
I believe that's it. Uh, Mayor, I don't see anybody else from the public that wishes to speak?
Okay.
Let's see, um.
Yeah, I see.
We can go back to Christina if she's ready. Ms. Brownlow, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Is this better?
Much better, yeah.
All right, I apologize. I don't know what happened. All right. It's interesting, there's, I feel this partially may have stemmed from concerns from residents who are living next to places that have. Uh, gone through waiver of plat- and I understand it. I've grown up out here, so. If anyone can say they've seen changes, it's me. And while I agree with respecting property rights and what our wishes are. I think we're talking about a legacy and a lifestyle that we have all chosen to be part of, that the majority of the folks are out here for, that they're raising their children for. And that we chose council members to uphold. There are still four very large parcels, particularly in Sunshine Ranches, three along Griffin. And one at Sheridan and Flamingo. And we averted, if you will, disaster last summer with the proposed Toll Brothers just behind the um. Christian church. It took a couple of meetings, but finally our voices were heard. But it gets a little tiring, so I think we're looking at setting up a language which makes sure. That we have this RR designation. It, no one said you had to build a barn. No one said you had to have a horse. But it provides the choice should you want to, or if you sell the person coming up after you wishes to. I look at this as a legacy of preserving what is very unique about us. Um, and I hope that that explains it clearly. And I hope that it expresses the concerns of our residents and what I've heard. I am currently fortunate enough to serve as the HOA president and uh. Bay, going back to last summer, no one, none of our residents wanted to see these one acre sites. Behind that church and the, where they were adamant about RR. So I I hope that you find my perspective useful. And I hope that I articulated my position and what I feel is the overall feeling of our HOA. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, um, we have a couple of minutes, I think, left. Any, any, um, one, one of the things that I want to make sure is is clear here. Is one of the goals of this time is to make sure that the council expressed what their thoughts were so that. The comp board would move in a direction that we could move forward and provide additional protection. But also in a way that they were comfortable that it would. It would be approved by the council when it, when it showed up at their doorstep. So, um. If there's anything um, from the comp board chairman or any of the members that they would like further clarification on. Um, from the council, this would be a great time to bring that up.
Yeah, I, um, so, um. I know that uh, Jim had expressed, uh, he was, you know, the, uh, kind of the genesis of this workshop, so. I just want to make sure again that all of you are comfortable uh. With our, with our process and moving forward. Again, uh, if there are some property right issues. Uh, anything very specific that you have a concern about, you know, definitely give us direction on that. Yeah, uh, you know, we could do it obviously later too, but I think right now, as long as we know that the board, uh, yeah, you know, I'm sorry, that the council is is on board with this. Uh, we're happy to move forward, so I just want to make sure that we have that understanding if we can today.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
This, this is Gary. Um, a couple of takeaways I'm getting, and I know I don't have much time left, um, for direction for the comp board. Um, I I think if anybody is plan on, planning on, from what I'm gathering.
reducing the ten, twenty percent, I think that's, uh, you're in a no-fly zone from what I'm gathering right here. And correct me, anybody correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, something I would like to see, and I would like to see, uh, some items from the comp board regarding this, but I would like to see it unanimous. I would like to, I would like to have, apply the same, same rule that we're under to them. Uh, that they work out solution that, that all the members agreed to. Uh, I think that would be real helpful. Uh, and I'm just giving you my thoughts. You know, this is a workshop, we're not voting on anything.
Absolutely.
You know, but I would really love to see a unanimous, uh, comp board on, 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 uh, various requirements if, if needed or necessary to go from there.
Great, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I want everyone to understand, I'm not against people having barns. Please don't, if that's what they think and get wrong. But the idea of taking away from allowing somebody to build this house, that bothers me, that, that's infringing on their rights. George's idea, and he's mentioned it several times, of allowing them to come in and use part of that eighty percent or, or, or the property or ninety percent of the property without it counting against the actual structure, the home that they built to live in or whatever, their dream home. For not to count against that is a great idea. Now, do we put a limit on how big it can be? You might want to put a limit on the size that it could be. I know we have the pole barn in existence here now, and that's a great. Some people might not want that full-size pole barn, but you don't want somebody putting up a fifty thousand square foot, uh, uh, barn back at their house. So, uh, the idea that George had a percentage after the ten or twenty percent to build would be a great, I, I mean, that's a great idea.
Great, thank you. Bob, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just real quick, um, I want to invite our neighbors to the comp plan board meetings. They are the, uh, what would it be, the third Thursday of the month? So, they're, they're on Zoom, they're on the town's calendar. You know, this isn't going to end tonight, this will probably go on for a few months. So, I would encourage you to be involved if you've got a dog in the hunt here so that, uh, you know, you can follow along. Thank you.
Great advice, thank you. Um, yeah, Lori.
I thought there already was a one percent rule that Don Maines passed years ago.
No.
I think there is. Keith, can you ask Keith to answer? He, I think it was a unanimous vote and it was one percent.
I mean, we will check the record, Lori, I, I don't remember it offhand.
It's a long time ago, I think I was a county commissioner.
Jeff Cadens is on, Jeff, do you know?
Yeah, there used to, there used to be something, and I said this at the comp plan board, but it was repealed a long time ago when dur- during one of the farm amendments that was implemented. We've done two, three, maybe four different farm ordinances over the years, and it went by the wayside at some point.
How long ago? Do you, could you look it up for me?
Um, I will look it up for you. I won't be able to do it right now, but yes, I will.
Great, thank you.
Okay, because I know it was passed and I never knew it was withdrawn.
Yep. All right, yeah, David.
Uh, just really quick, um, the positions that I, that I feel comfortable with are that the two percent non-impenge on the ten slash twenty percent, that it applies only to new developments that have not been plotted. Uh, that is that it's, uh, if it's a rebuild, it, the rebuild applies under what was zoned at the time. Um, and it not be designated as a barn, but as, as Noel had suggested, the ag reserve. I think that's, um, some of the basics. And just preserving, and, and as I said before, preserving a place for the horses, it should be tantamount of the town. That concludes it.
Great.
I, I would like to say real quick, Dave, I appreciate your input, but totally reserving it to new developments is hurting the rest of the town. To give people an extra two percent for barns if they need it is a benefit to everyone. Uh, it shouldn't be restricted to new construction because that, that, that penalizes people that may have purchased an old house and they're built out to twenty percent. And now they want a barn and realize they can't. So, you may think about the consequences.
Well, I think, I think the issue with that is whether it is available, a two percent is probably fine for everybody or whether somebody has to set aside two percent, which may be a restriction. So, that's, that's the key, how is it set up? And, and I'll leave that to the comp board to work through. But I think, uh, I think that from what you've heard from the council is that, well, I won't even, I won't even say that. You, you, you've heard, you've been here. So, um, all right, this, I think, was very helpful to walk through this, uh, hear the input from everyone. And, um, and I think I have full confidence that the comp board will come up with an excellent proposal for us to vote on. And may, it may take a few meetings, may take a few months, but I'm, I'm sure that it'll work out well. So, thank you all for your input, your time, and, um, have a great evening.